She's more interested in electric.
Welcome to our council meeting for December 4, 2017. In consideration of those around me, please turn off your cell phones. Um, cell phones and other electronic devices. The invocation will be given by Councilperson Christine Shue, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Holy One, you have given us the responsibility of leadership in the affairs of our city. May what we say and do here this night be worthy of your sight and for the benefit of those who have entrusted us to this duty. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to accept the work session minutes from 10:23 17 and the regular meeting from 11:20 17?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes visitor recognition. We will now receive the recognized visitors. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak. When called upon, please use the podium. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone. Limit your comments to three minutes. Any dialogue must be conducted through me as president of the council. Although your comments or questions can be addressed to the council, administration or both. Side of the room, anyone like to speak?
Do you have something to say?
Sure. Uh, please, and your, um, your address and me, please.
My name is Ken Popp. I live at 632 Argonne Drive. And I'm respectfully asking this council that they would request, uh, a special counsel investigative corruption that's happening in this city, primarily through the, uh, illegal integration. There's, there's... There are a number of companies here that their sole function is to launder cash. If you look through the auditor's office records from 1995 to the present, you'll find four ca- four pro- properties, four cash sales, especially if you look from $50,000 down, they're all cash sales, no things on them. Those houses are being used, so how is it legal to rent? I would, uh, I'm respectfully asking this council that they would request online security device to, uh, open an office in this city and investigate.
If, if the gentleman has evidence of the commission of the crime, there is the chief of police. I suggest that you contact him immediately.
I did ask you.
Please be sir, excuse me sir.
See what?
Excuse me.
Okay.
You may, uh, talk to the chief to fill out a police report so that our, uh, police department can, uh, respond appropriately. Okay? Thank you.
Okay.
I'll write my name and number for you.
What?
On the side of the room, anyone would like to speak? Okay, we're gonna move into legislation. If you wish to comment on legislation, you must request to do so at this, this time. Those make such requests and will be called upon after the reading. Any dialogue must be conducted through me as president of the council. Although your comments or questions can be addressed to the council, administration or both. When called upon, please use the podium. Clearly state your name and addresses in the microphone and limit your comments to three minutes. Ordinance number one at the table, ordinance number two, second reading. Ordinance number three, second reading. Ordinance number four, second reading. Ordinance number five, first reading. Ordinance number six, first reading. Ordinance number seven, first reading. And you said, um, you wanted to do a presentation first, sir?
Yeah, well, I put one as time for, uh, uh, ordinance number two.
Okay, well, we're gonna do ordinance number two now.
Alright, um, we're gonna go over the 2018 budget again. Uh, tonight we're going to concentrate on utilities and capital projects. I'll do a very brief overview of the total budget right now. Uh, total budget for 2018 is going to be 78 more, supposedly 78.5 million. This is 5.4 million dollars more than it was last year for 2017. Uh, the main reason for the increase are we are proposing to do 5.1 million dollars more of capital projects in 2018 than 2017. Okay. Uh, first, we'll go over the water funds. Supposed, uh, water revenues are an estimated, uh, 4.7 million. Uh, this is a 7% decrease from 2017. And the expenses are going to be 4.8 million. This is a 4% decrease from 2017. Uh, the main reason for the decrease, the city has been paying down our notes. We're paying down our notes by $250,000, so we have less debt payments, but we also have less note revenues coming in. Um, the 2018 water fund budget will have a deficit of almost $190,000. Uh, these are the total water funds budget. Um, in Fund 710, we're proposing to have a 4.8 million dollar budget. Uh, this is slightly down from last year of 2017. Again, the reason this, these are down is because our debt expenses or debt payments have been reduced. Um, for the Fund 712, this is where the majority of the capital comes from for the water department. We are proposing 10.3 million dollars. This is up from 9.6 million dollars in 2017. Uh, the large, um, capital projects that are, we're requesting for the water fund is 8.4 million dollars for the continuation of the construction of the water intake. And then we are also, um, requesting 1.2 million dollars to replace, uh, replacement of the water line enrichment road. Um, the water fund's largest expenses for 2018 will be for capital outlay. Uh, these are the capital projects, the water fund that's requesting, again, Richmond Road water line, the water intake, um, are the highlights of it, and we are requesting 9.8 million dollars of total capital in 2018 for the water fund. Next is the sewer's fund. Revenues are estimated at 3.8 million and the expenses are estimated at 3.8 million. Uh, the sewer fund will be operating at $3,000 surplus in 2018. Uh, the sewer funds, their total budget is going up 180,000 in 2017. Uh, the reason for the increase, um, capital projects that are requesting an extra 127,000. And, um, their transfers out to the, their capital fund is going to increase by $100,000. The sewer's largest expense are their personnel expenses. This is 2.6 million dollars. And materials and supplies, this is where they pay for their chemicals and machinery. Um, the services and charges, um, that accounts for the sewer's portion of the general fund expenses, their lab expenses, and their sl- their sludge expenses. Okay, the next slide shows the sewers' requested capital. We are requesting 327,000 for their capital. Uh, their big one is about $150,000, so that's for their new crown flex break. And then they also have various plant upgrades going on at, at the plant. Um, they will be paying cash for all of their capital projects in 2018. The electric funds, the total estimated revenues are expected to be 26.4 million dollars. Their, um, this is a 2% increase from 2017. Their expenses are expected to be, uh, just about the same thing, 26.4 million dollars. And, and this as well as a 2% increase from 2017. Uh, the electric fund will have just over a thousand dollar budget surplus in 2018. Um, the electric fund's budget, um, is going up significantly. It's going up by 5.4 million dollars. Uh, the reason for the large increase, um, we are requesting 4.5 million dollars for the AMI project. And then our purchase power expenses are going to be going up, uh, by a million dollars in 2018. Uh, the electric fund's largest expenses are utilities, and that's 15.5 million dollars. Um, the, with 15 million of that going towards purchase power. Okay, we'll do that. In total, the electric fund is requesting 6.4 million dollars for capital projects. Um, the large one is 3.5 million dollars to put new meters in for the AMI project. Uh, we've had a couple of presentations about that already. Then there's also a million dollars associated with the new software that will leave the utility department to handle the AMI project. Uh, the utilities building system is, uh, extremely old, and this would update that as well. Um, there are also various plant upgrades and, uh, distribution upgrades for the electric system as well. Uh, stormwater's budget. It's going to be, uh, just under a million dollars in revenues. This is a decrease of $70,000. Um, the reason it decreased so much, we paid down our notes, um, so we have less, uh, note revenues coming in. We paid down our notes by $70,000. The expenses are going to be almost, uh, 1.3 million dollars. Uh, this is an increase of just over $60,000. Um, the reason for the increase, that, uh, we are expecting to have more capital request, more, more capital projects in 2018. Um, this one will be operating at a deficit of just over $270,000 in 2018. Stormwater's, uh, largest expenses for capital outlay, um, their big project is the Maplewood Stormwater Project, which is $600,000. This was originally budgeted for in '16 and was budgeted for in '17. Uh, we're having an issue with the railroad getting permits, and we're still waiting on the railroad to give us those permits. Um, and now we'll go over the total capital. Yeah, please. Okay. The total capital budget for 2018, the city is requesting just under $20 million. Um, the $17 million water intake project is going to be financed through a 20-year interest-free loan. Uh, this interest-free loan is going to save the city millions of dollars in interest payments. Um, we are budgeting 8.4 million dollars for the water intake project in 2018. Uh, 2.2 million dollars is going to be spent on paving roads and repairing city-owned sidewalks. The electric is requesting 6.5 million dollars, which 4.5 million of this will be going towards, uh, the AMI project. And 720,000 dollars is being requested for stormwater projects. Okay. Um, here are the 2018 road projects. Uh, Richmond Road is going to cost just under a million dollars. Uh, ODOT is paying for almost $700,000 of this project. Walnut Avenue was 606,000. Uh, we received funding for this. The city only has to pay, uh, $303,000 for that. Bank Street erosion control, that's $200,000. Pearl Street will be done, 125,000. Transit Street, 60,000. Uh, engineering for AB Jackson Street is 123,000. And then, uh, the city sidewalk improvements is 130,000, bringing the total to 2 million, 2.2 million dollars. And that just, just shows where the capital expenses are being spent on, what capital money is being spent on. Uh, the water capital has the largest one, and again, that's the 8.4 million dollars, that's the main one. Electric has some large capital projects. Their largest being the, uh, AMI projects. And that's it. You guys got any questions?
Questions?
I have a question. Oh, sure. Um, Andy, I was just wondering, it's on the capital budget for, um, the electric? And there was $100,000 for water line?
Yeah, they will be assisting, so, uh, the electric department, they need some water work done with, when Richmond Road is getting done, the main leading to the plant is gonna get done on two, changed out. And so the electric department will be paying for their portion of that.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Um, I do want to point out, this is the second reading. Um, council set the budget for close to two months now. Next council meeting is the final reading, and, uh, if any changes to the budget, please get them to me as soon as possible because we have to take care of it before we can bring this council.
Okay, I'd like to move into ordinance number two, second reading.
An ordinance makes appropriations for the current expenses and expenditures of the City of Paintville, State of Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018, and adapting the operating budget and declaring emergency.
This will stay on, second reading? Oh, sorry, I was right, I was too driven.
Ray Stone, 346 Bridge of Lane, Paintsville. Only one comment, minor comment on the budget. Andy didn't talk about it today. That had to do with the, uh, movement of funds, of money from the general fund to the cemetery fund. Now, uh, I know we have to maintain the cemetery, it's not an issue. But I guess shouldn't the cemetery fund be sort of self-sustaining? And, uh, I know that there may be some funding available on a self-sustaining basis, but when I see movement of money from the general fund here, I ask, you know, what else are we doing? Now, I personally know, because I asked, what some of the plans are, but, you know, how we communicate it to the residents, I think is important. When they see money coming out of the general fund that should be used for roads, et cetera, et cetera, you know, and supporting the cemetery fund, you know, you got a question. So, my concern is, you know, what are we doing and how are we communicating that to residents?
I can address it. Um, we mentioned it in the first subject presentation. What we're actually doing and what we have done is compile comparables of cemeteries in Lake County. Um, I have all of the data as far as what each one is charging for lot prices and burials, and we're comparing where we stand and then trying to find a ground where we're not too expensive that we, that people stop buying in our cemetery, but that we're back up to speed where people in those surrounding communities are. So, we do have the spreadsheet, we do have the data, we just haven't come send it back to council yet. It was, um, my plan to bring it to council as an educational, or a discussion piece before the end of the year. So that would be next council meeting.
And in that, I know prior to Monica's time with us, we had asked for, um, some sort of a study to be done on the feasibility of selling the properties because they happen, you know, in such a, not green, but they've been negative for a lot of years. Um, and at the time, it, it just wasn't, it wasn't fiscally sound to sell them either because we wouldn't get the money back and ultimately we'd be responsible, so just a little addition to that.
Can I ask if there's specific information for the residents on the money that is currently being moved from the general fund there? Like, is it just general maintenance? What was it for?
So, in 2018, the general fund be moving $205,000 to the seventh sixth fund. For 2017, it was 250,000. This counts for salaries, operations, just, um, council decided a while ago that we want to be in the cemetery business, and unfortunately, this is costing them business. It goes to salaries, maintaining the cemeteries, buying equipment, that kind of stuff.
To general operations?
Right.
I think a few years ago, we booked in selling it, but there was just no buyers.
Um, it was looked at, and I thought it was council's decision, or maybe, maybe it was, it was looked at. I don't really remember how it went down, but yes, it was looked at.
But as I remember it, the people were interested in buying both the side one, but they weren't interested in buying the other one. Obviously because the other one is full, and so therefore we would still have to maintain that one and bring in really no revenue for the other. Thank you. Um, ordinance number three, second reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $1 million notes in anticipation of the issuance of funds to pay costs for re relocating and improving the Chestnut Street water storage chain, replacing the water line in Elm Street, together with other purgences thereto, improving the city's stormwater management systems by constructing and installing storm sewer lines, detention basins, and inlet basins together as well. Purgences thereto, servicing portions of Nelson Street, St. Street, and certain city streets to be improved by the city council, together with all work incidental thereto, acquiring a dump truck with snow powder, together with necessary purgences thereto, improving the city's stormwater management system by constructing and installing storm sewer lines, detention basins, inlet basins, and related improvements, including the North Avenue stormwater project and the city's 2010 stormwater improvement program. Together with all purgences thereto, relocating water mains along State Route 86 and Auburn Road, together with any necessary purgences thereto, improving the municipal water system we're constructing, and installing new water lines and other, uh, distribution system improvements, together with the necessary purgences thereto, and extending sanitaries to your lines and constructing a pump station to service the Shamrock Boulevard area of the city, all together with the necessary purgences thereto, declaring emergency.
Okay, this is our annual legislation we're rolling our notes. Um, in 2017, the note issuance was 1.6 million. 2018, the issuance will be a million dollars, so it's going down by 600,000 dollars, so 40%. Uh, the city is being very aggressive with paying down our debt. Um, we'll have this note paid off, uh, most likely by 2019, 2020, which is five to 10 years ahead of schedule. Um, there's no debt in this project, and all these projects have been done, uh, they're done years ago, and just were made for the debt to finish paying off of those projects. This, you go through these.
Okay. Keep this on for third reading. Um, ordinance number four, second reading.
An ordinance enacting section 933.191 of the PTO report of 1998 relating to extending the water system infrastructure improvement fee declaring emergency.
Okay, uh, this piece of legislation was requested by the finance committee. The current water infrastructure fee expires June 30th, 2026. Um, we are requesting to extend this to December 31st, 2039. The reason for that, uh, the debt payment for the new water intake is going to run through 2039, and so we would like to have these funds coming in to offset the debt payment. Um, this generates 1.2 million dollars a year. The debt payment for the water intake is going to be in the ballpark of 850,000 to 900,000 dollars a year. If this isn't extended, uh, the water fund will, won't be able to do as much capital projects because we'll have to set aside more money to pay for the future debt payments.
Questions? See none. This will stay on for a third reading. Move on to ordinance number five, first reading.
An ordinance enacting chapter 1121 erosion of sediment control of the 1998 ratified ordinances of the City of Paintsville declaring emergency.
This legislation accompanies a stormwater management utility registration. City council adopted erosion control regulations to the subdivision regulations in 2005. The regulations recommended in 2000 allow each incorporate stormwater management controls and the changes to chapter 1121 are based on collaborative effort between the Shubron River Lawship Partners and the Lake County Shoreland Water District. The language has been reviewed with base two compliance by Ohio EPA, and this ordinance improves the change to align EPA settlement and erosion control requirements, um, for our permit. And since the changes to chapter 1121 are significant, and the charter is being proposed for adoption, and we provide the highlighted copies to show the change.
Questions? Is this something that, uh, we would need to push or pass, or is this something you would like to see?
No, I think it's a free of means.
Okay, good. Any other questions about erosion? Now, keep this on first reading. Ordinance number six, first reading.
An ordinance enacting chapter 941 stormwater utility and stormwater management of the 1998 ratified ordinances of the City of Paintsville and the Shubron River District.
The Ohio EPA requires all communities that have a base two stormwater management permit to develop and implement post-construction stormwater management controls. The model ordinance developed by the Ohio EPA, adopted by the City of Paintsville on June, uh, June 2001, to maintain compliance with the Ohio EPA permit, um, the model ordinance was updated to reflect post-construction stormwater requirements. The changes outlined in chapter 941 then to incorporate those model regulations into the city's current ordinances. Since the changes to chapter 941 are significant, an entire new charter is being proposed for adoption. So this would also clarify that our agreement with the Lawship Partners and the Lake County Shoreland Water Districts.
Great. Any other questions or concerns? See none. We'll leave this on first reading. Ordinance number seven, seven, uh, first reading.
An ordinance enacting chapter 1140 of parents' setbacks to the 1998 affect notices of the City of Paintsville declaring emergency.
Okay, this legislation creates an entirely different chapter with the subdivision regulations of the pre-federal businesses. The intended this regulation is to protect and enhance the function of clearing areas by providing reasonable controls governing buildings and using civic energy to minimize the procurement of weapons and water courses. The regulations have been reviewed by the City of Paintsville Committee Commission as well as the Chemistial and Water Districts. This is also, um, an ordinance that we told EPA that we would do as part of our programs that we've got for the water intake.
Any questions or concerns? I, uh, I spoke to Dan Donaldson from the Water and Soil, and he was very happy that you guys reached out and asked them to help you, and, uh, I'm really excited to move forward with this if it works out. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have already done our presentation to council. We'll move into the new business, which we have done. Administrative reports, law director. City manager.
I have one moment here. Um, the city looks beautiful. People have put up gorgeous Christmas lights. I just wanted to remind people that if you hang Christmas decorations from trees that overhang the sidewalk as you come through and plow, you might end up hitting those ornaments off of your trees. And if you put your ornaments too close to the sidewalk, you might end up ripping them up as we plow by. So if you, there are specific residents who will be calling, but if you yourself have put ornaments pretty close to the sidewalk, you might want to move those back. And that's my little reminder.
Great. Uh, clerk of council, correspondence?
The next regular council meeting will be held Monday, December 18th, 2017 at 7:30, and the protocols are due January 5th.
Second.
That's it.
All right, closing comments. Mrs. Shue.
I just want to remind everybody that the, uh, the lighting contest for the City of Paintsville is happening again this year, and the judging will be Monday, December 11th, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. So the winners will be announced on our Facebook page. So just want to give everybody a chance to go out there and really put it on the dog so that you can have a lot of nice lights to win. Don't know what the prize is, though.
I'm a judge. We really need, like, till 9 o'clock, so, so from 6 to 9, just...
Oh, well, 6 to 8, you're right.
I don't mind.
6 to 9.
All right, sorry. Um, is anything else?
Just.
Uh, Mr. Augustine?
Oh, that's it.
Mr. Fodor?
Uh, just a reminder, this time too, heaters and, uh, be careful where you're putting additional space heaters, uh, smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide detectors are extremely important to have in the homes. smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide detectors are extremely important to have in the homes. I think you read, see, read and see every week where there's a fire and a lot of taking lives. So, besides that, I wanted to thank all the residents that came out to meet and greet over at Elm Street when we have last Monday. And thanks to Councilman Shook for getting that organized, and for Monica and the chief to show up and field some questions. I think it was a nice outing, and maybe we'll try to do it in another war zone. That's all I got.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'm good, thanks, Paul.
Mrs. Jenkins?
I'm not getting this time.
Mrs. Denal?
I want to just reiterate that the community is beginning to look very festive with the holidays, and I appreciate all the effort that goes into decorating also for, you know, our electric department and everybody who contributes to our community's decorations. I too attended the town hall meeting with, like, with the community members, organizing all of that, and also thank the community members that came out and were invested, and are invested in our community. And then in addition to safety regarding the clouds and things like that, remember that children do walk to school, and so to be, of course, very careful in passing them and watching them around schoolmums and things like that. That's all I have.
Great, I just want to, again, talk about the Christmas holiday lighting. There's another thing, too, if you see a van, typically a minivan, going to your neighborhood between six and nine o'clock, flashlight going at your house, they're looking for the, the number on your house, and Mr. Surratt, if you could put that in there, because we, I'm usually the one judging and work for us, so. And I'm not biased, because we really don't do a lot of decorations in our house, so. I do whenever you're for some reason, but anyways. So yes, if you could, six to nine will be, there's going to be a group of four buses with flashlights and going throughout the whole city, so please.
Don't contact the police.
Yes. But at this motion, or at this time, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session. In order to pardon two sections six to, to consider the important employment disposal discipline promotion and motion to compensation of an employee or official of the city.
Second.
I will call.
Mrs. Shook?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Denal?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes, let's please go to another courtroom, thank you.